Hey there everybody, can y'all hear me?
Hi Faith, yes, we can hear you. Good afternoon.
And just letting you guys know, I have this live streaming to YouTube.
Sorry, sorry Mariah.
You're fine, you're fine. But I have us automatically streaming up to YouTube as well.
Okay, alright, that's perfect. And I guess we're just recording from the Zoom function?
Uh, yeah, so we're recording from Zoom and then it's live streaming up into YouTube.
YouTube, right, I got it, okay. So Sheena, you got that?
Yes ma'am, I heard her.
Hey, hello.
Hi.
Try to share screen real quick, Mariah. It's not gonna work. I want it to bring up MuniCode. While we're going through the meeting to make it flow a little more succinctly. I don't think I'm gonna be able to, well, let's see. Are you seeing the MuniCode screen?
Yes. Yes, I can see it.
Call to order?
Yep.
Okay.
It's ma'am's there.
Okay. Commissioner Floyd and Chelsea, this is just a mic check. Can you hear me clearly?
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
Now, am I supposed to have the video on here? Hello?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, do I need to have video on or we're just talking through this?
No, you're fine.
Okay.
Chelsea, can you confirm your?
Yes ma'am, I can hear you.
Yeah, I hear you loud and clear.
Okay, awesome.
Sorry if I keep going in and out, something keeps kicking me out.
Yeah, I got kicked out a second ago too, Mariah. Also, when I tried to just come back in as me rather than the host, it wasn't recognizing the meeting ID. I'm not sure what was going on there.
Ugh, ah, it's weird.
Yeah, that is weird, but Chelsea and Commissioner Floyd are here, so which means it does work. So I'm not sure what's going on on the host side.
Wonder, I'm not sure if we can, well, the YouTube's still up. Okay, the YouTube's still up. I'm unsure if we could be signed in at the same time, but YouTube's still up.
Good evening, Commissioner Burdette and Sarah. If you guys can confirm that you hear me and that your mics are working okay, please.
Loud and clear, Commissioner Burdette. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you. Sarah, can you hear us okay? Sarah, are you there? Commissioner Helmley, good evening. She's not on yet. Sarah, can you hear me? Commissioner Helmley, good evening. Can you hear me okay? If you're speaking, you're still on mute.
Um, how about now?
Yes ma'am, good evening.
Good evening. Are you well?
I am well, how about you?
I am, sitting in front of a nice fire on this cold day.
I love it, I love it.
Um, I'm working on the video.
You don't necessarily have to have it.
Okay.
We can work from audio. You don't have to be on camera.
Thank you ma'am.
Yes ma'am. Sarah, let's try it again, can you hear me?
Sarah and the 843 number don't have a mic option.
Ah.
Yeah, their Zoom, I can't ask them to unmute. It's like their device doesn't see that they have a mic.
Gotcha. Tim, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can hear you, okay. So we can't mute everybody?
Yeah, we can, we have the ability to mute it. She's saying that, yeah. She's saying that Sarah's phone and the 843 number that's online don't have a microphone option. But, yeah.
I got you.
Chairman Ron, can you confirm that you can hear us okay? Good evening, sir.
Steve, I'm not sure where. You'd be the only one.
Chairman Ron, can you hear me? Mariah, do you see anything going on on his side?
Oh, I clicked Tim and asked him to unmute. He's unmuted now, the way his mic icon looks.
I'll mute myself.
Yeah, Tim, mute yourself. Trying to make sure that everyone can hear us and we can hear them. Lee, can you unmute for me for a second? Make sure that you can hear us and we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Okay, alright.
There you go, thank.
Like he was speaking, but we couldn't hear him.
Ms. Stephanie, can you hear me?
Yes ma'am, thank you Danielle. How are you?
Thank you, I'm great, how about you?
Well, thank you. Sarah? Coming in, but we've got some feedback.
That was me, my apologies, I was having some technical difficulties.
Ron, thank you.
Stephanie, we meet, do we have everybody?
We're waiting for one more. Commissioner Deloach just came in. Commissioner Kiefer is not yet on. Commissioner Deloach, if you could just acknowledge your presence, please sir.
Yes, I'm on the call.
Okay, are we gonna need to do a roll call since we have people? Throw it up in Zoom, okay?
Yes.
Commissioner Kiefer was sick today, so I don't know.
Yeah, I spoke with him last, yesterday. He said he was gonna try to attend, but if he, yeah, if he's not filling with money, I'll be, but I haven't heard anything otherwise as yet.
Okay, we'll keep a watchful eye to see when and if he comes in, but you do have a quorum present.
Okay, good. Alright, well, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. For this, sorry, January 21st, 2025, Ethicam County Board of Commissioners. I appreciate everybody gathering on short notice. We, you know, not used to having snowstorms here, so and hopefully everything stays safe and and works out for us well. Stephanie, would you mind taking a role for us, please?
Yes sir, sure will. Chairman Damon Ron.
Present.
Commissioner Forrest Floyd.
I'm here.
Commissioner Roger Burdette.
Present.
Commissioner Jamie Deloach.
Here.
Commissioner Beth Helmley.
Here.
And Commissioner Phil Kiefer. Who is not yet present, but Mr. Chairman, you do have a quorum. Your invocation will be offered tonight by Commissioner Burdette.
Very good, thank you. Roger, do you mind getting us started, sir? Thank you.
Happy to. Lord, we come to you today and ask for your guidance. We ask for wisdom and support as we begin this meeting. Lord, I pray that you help us engage in a meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a community, and I pray that what we say and do honors you in some way. We also pray for the safety of everyone that may be encountering this storm. That everyone is taken care of and our county is taken care of as well, Lord. And we pray this all in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Stephanie says this is my first Zoom meeting. Do we typically do our pledge, so?
I don't, we don't have a flag to face to say it, I think.
I got you, that was my thoughts as well, but I wasn't sure if that was prior protocol you guys had. I know you probably met through COVID through Zoom meetings, so very good. Alright, I'll move on to item five, which is agenda approval. Do we have any changes to the agenda? I'm sorry, I didn't get a response on that. Any changes to the agenda?
No sir, other than those that are already noted. The agenda that was sent to you with limited items for discussion for tonight, all those that are highlighted on that agenda will not be part of tonight's discussion. There are no other changes.
Very good, thank you, thank you. I didn't suspect.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the noted changes.
I'll second Floyd.
All in favor? None opposed, motion passes. Alright, moving on to item number six is approval of our minutes from the January seventh, twenty twenty five regular meeting. Are there any questions or concerns? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Deloach?
I'll wait. I'll second it.
All in favor? None opposed, motion passes. We'll be skipping item seven, well, actually, public comments. Comments shall pertain to agenda items only. Should you wish to make remarks, clearly state your full name into the microphone before commencing to speak. Let's see, our correspondence, the agenda packet for this meeting is posted, and the updated one is posted. I checked myself. On the county's website, any additional documentation presented at the meeting shall be submitted to the clerk for receipt, recording, and distribution to the board. Alright, we will now be moving to our consent agenda. This section shall include all routine items for which there will be no discussion. Should a need arise for debate, the item can be moved to the appropriate area of the agenda. And we're gonna begin on item number one, twenty twenty five dash zero three four, change order. Consideration to approve to ratify and affirm a change order number five for the Effingham County CEM Gym Expansion Construction of Laveter and Associates Incorporated. Item number two, consideration to approve to renew the hardware warranty agreement with Dominion Voting Systems Incorporated, ensuring continued maintenance and support. Item number three, consideration to approve the revised IDC contract with Moffett and Nickel for professional services. Item number four, consideration to approve a purchase order for Musco Sports Lighting LLC from McCall Park. This quote was approved at our January seventh meeting. Item number five, consideration to approve to ratify and affirm the updated lease of three twenty twenty four F-150 police responder trucks to include the purchase of aftermarket equipment to outfit them for law enforcement use. And item number six, consideration to approve to ratify and affirm the enterprise vehicle order replacement for Effingham County Sheriff's Office. I do not see any further items if I'm, and so, gonna get a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, Deloach.
Second, Burdette.
Okay.
All in favor? None opposed, motion passes. Alright, we'll be carrying on our unfinished business in our next in-person meeting. And what date was that meeting, Stephanie?
It's actually postponed until February eighteen.
February eighteen. Thank you, ma'am. Alright, we'll be moving on to item number eleven, which is new business. Consideration to approve resolution number twenty five zero zero four to release the requirement to issue mobile home decals. I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve alternative one, Deloach.
I'll second Floyd.
All in favor?
Ah.
None opposed, motion passes. Item number two, consideration to approve resolution zero two five dash zero zero three to authorize the tax commissioner to accept checks, cash, debit cards, and/or credit cards for payment on behalf of Effingham County. If there's no discussion, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion. Helmey?
Second.
Deloach.
Yeah, Burdette on that one. All in favor? None opposed, motion carries. Item number three, consideration to approve resolution number zero two five dash zero zero two and amend to the schedule of fees. If there's no discussion, I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion we approve. Burdette?
I'll second Deloach.
All in favor? No opposing, motion carries. Item number four, consideration to approve a preliminary plat for Blue Jay Apartments located on Blue Jay Road, Zoned R three, map number three two six, parcel number seventeen E, and the first district. Steve, is there anything that needs to be added to this at all?
Uh, sir, this is, um, if all the preliminary plaid approval checks had been checked, just wanna remind everybody, there's a sixty-foot high variance that was granted at the rezoning. Uh, and there's still a development agreement forthcoming that you'll see for water sewer reuse. Um, and that final plat will still need to be approved after they've started construction and completed construction.
Very good. Does anyone have any questions for Steve or comments?
I reviewed this today with Steve, and it seems to meet all the requirements. And with that, I'll make a motion that we approve.
You have a second?
Second, Burdette.
All in favor? Any opposed? If not, motion carries. Alright, moving on to item number six, consideration to approve GDOT LAP application to make Effingham County Capital Improvement Project competitive to receive federal funding for future road projects. Jonathan, you want, you have anything to add to this?
Uh, no, this is just, again, just to make us a little bit more competitive to receive federal funds for when we want to take a, you know, road project, mainly our collector arterial roads to, you know, make them eligible for federal funds, so we would only be required to follow this when we choose to go through that procurement cycle. So, other than that, stats recommending approval.
Very good. Any, any discussion from commission? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve, Deloach.
I'll wait. I'll second it.
All in favor? None opposed, motion carries. Item number seven, consideration to approve the award recommendation and execution of the construction contract for Baker Park. Bid twenty five dash ITB dash zero seven seven with C Merrill Construction. Is there any discussion? Or Danielle, do you have anything to add for this?
Not really. I just wanted to say that these, that we received three bids for this project. Staff recommends awarding the contract to C Merrill Construction since they provided the lowest responsive and responsible bid. The project includes renovations, new installations like pickleball courts and lighting, and additions such as a kayak launch and a dog park. The recommended contractor met all specifications and qualifications with a project duration of two hundred and sixty calendar days. So staff recommends alternative one.
Very good. Any discussion from the commission? If not, ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one, Burdette.
Second, Deloach.
All in favor? None opposed, motion carries. Item number eight, consideration to approve change order number four for Southern Civil LLC for Hodgsville Lift Station for construction. Danielle, do you have anything to add?
This change order addresses the need for the twelve-inch insert valve due to unforeseen requirements. So to accommodate this, it had to increase the contract price, and it needed a ninety-day extension. Um, so this change order was reviewed and approved by Hussy Gay Bell, so staff recommends alternative one.
Any discussion from micro commissioners?
Yeah, just real quick, this is Burdette. Tim, is it typical to have so many change orders for a lift station? This is my first experience with it. Excuse my ignorance, but this is number four. It's, it's great that it's still below the original amount. Grateful for that, but we've had a lot of change orders. Is that typical with something like this?
Yeah, I'll say on this one, the actual design came across some some problems that, that we didn't, that we didn't foresee on this. And so, I don't necessarily think any of them are that major. Matter of fact, for some reason, I think one was a negative, but
There was.
But the, but none of them really raised a, raised a red flag since we were still coming in under what they originally proposed.
I was just curious. It seemed like a lot of them. I know we've had a lot several. Hopefully we'll get to the finish line on this, but with that in mind, I'll make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second, Floyd.
All in favor? None opposed, motion carries. Item number nine, consideration for approval of intergovernmental lighting agreements with the Georgia Department of Transportation for various projects. Danielle, do you have anything to add?
Just Effingham County and GDOT have partnered to enhance safety and visibility by installing lighting systems at the key intersections, including State Road thirty at Collet-Helmly Road, uh, State Route seventeen at Marlowe Road and Wesley Drive, and then State Route, Route twenty-six and US eighty at Sand Hill Road. So while, you know, the, the GDOT's gonna fund the installation of these systems, and Effingham County will manage the long-term operation, maintenance, and energy cost in compliance with the Georgia Utility Facility Protection Act, so staff recommends alternative one.
Very good. Danielle, just for my clarification, how, how do they determine these need areas are just based upon traffic counts?
I, I can answer that. The GDOT has a design specification for any roundabout on their roads requires lighting. So, the, and now I will make one correction in that there is one of the, one of them, we will be paying for the lighting because it's part of the package that we're paying for, which is thirty and Collet-Helmly, but the other ones are GDOT-initiated projects. Just as a general rule, the, even when it comes to traffic light signals, the county's participation in the project is that we will cover the operating expenses or the electric bills on these.
Gotcha. Thank you for that clarification, Tim. Is any further discussion from commission?
Tim, on the, on the one for Collet-Helmly, is that gonna be a share for the lighting, or are we, are we on our own for that one?
No, it's, it's considered part of the construction costs, so whatever the share formula that we have with the developer, which I, I think it's, what is it, eighty-three seventeen or something like that?
Yeah.
This would be included in that.
Part of that, okay. Good.
Any further discussion from any commissioners? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve alternative one, Burdette.
Second, Deloach.
All in favor? None opposed, motion carries. Stephanie, I'm gonna pause for a second. Are you able to get all this correctly?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Just let me know if I need to slow down or anything, okay? Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Alright, item number ten, consideration for approval of the scope, schedule, and fee proposal submitted by Johnson, Murr-Marin, and Thompson Incorporated for the Goshen widening project from GR, CR forty, one forty, and Hodgville Road to SR twenty-one.
Yes, sir. This proposal from JMT will provide valuation and acquisition services for the Goshen Road Widening Project. The proposal covers right-of-way services for a hundred and thirteen parcels. Staff recommends alternative one.
Yeah, we have any discussion or questions from the commission? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one, Burdette.
Second, Floyd.
All in favor? None opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item number twelve?
Eleven.
Eleven, sorry. I was just making sure you were paying attention. Thank you. I had to put my reading glasses on just now, because I could not tell if it was a C or a G on that one. Alright, item number eleven, consideration to approve a quote the installation of a well and its supporting infrastructure at Meldrum Park with Shepherd Well and Pump Services.
Yes, sir. Staff collected three quotes for the well installation at Meldrum Park, and Shepherd Well and Pump Services provided the lowest quote at thirteen thousand. So this project will support the restroom facilities and minimal irrigation needs, so staff recommends alternative one.
Good. Any questions from commission?
No. I'm glad that we're finally moving forward with some of these projects over Meldrum. I make a motion to approve.
Second, Burdette.
All in favor? None opposed, motion carries. Item number twelve, consideration to approve a quote and purchase order from PlaySouth Playground Creators for the design and installation of a playground for Meldrum Park.
Yes, sir. This purchase order is for the design, equipment, and installation of a PlaySouth Playground at Meldrum Park. The project benefits from discounts provided by PlaySouth and Sourcewell, so with installation to be completed by Burke Equipment, so staff recommends alternative one.
And this will be completely turnkey by them?
Yes.
Do we have a time for that?
Yeah, what's the time? It's six-eight week delivery and usually about two weeks or two weeks installation.
Yes, sir. It's usually pretty quick.
Okay.
And they are providing the demolition and everything that existing as well?
Yeah, let me give you a quick heads up on that. So we had to take all of the playground equipment out of there when the county took over the park when the lease was terminated, simply because it was unsafe. And so, since, since that was the case, we're actually going to get the playground in first and then come back in and do the rest of the park, so we can, so we can get it used again. So there is no demolition, because we really removed everything that was already there already in-house.
Very good. So this will be part of the new park that we are placing in Meldrum. This will be the first phase, I'm assuming.
Correct, right. So we'll do this, and then the second phase will award the rest of the park, which includes resurfacing the basketball court and the pickleball courts and the walking trail, asphalt parking, et cetera.
Gotcha. Have we already put that out in the bid? Yeah.
No, that's the one we are looking at alternative procurement policy procedures for. And so, we're gonna discuss that with you at the retreat and hopefully get that on the February agenda.
Great, great. Yeah, I think that'd be much more expeditious. Very good. Any, any questions from commission?
Again, I appreciate us moving forward. At least getting the playground set up. I've had quite a few people inquiring about getting the playground back up and running, so with that, I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second, Deloach.
Good. All in favor? None opposed, motion carries. Item number thirteen, consideration to approve twenty five dash ITB dash zero eight one bid award and contract to McLendon Enterprises Incorporated for Old River Road Maintenance Resurfacing twenty twenty-five project. Danielle?
Yes, sir. The Old River Road Maintenance Resurfacing Bid received four vendor bid responses with McLendon Enterprises Incorporated as the lowest bidder. This project involves resurfacing three point nine eight miles of roadway from US eighty to the Chatham County line with work to be completed within two hundred and seventy days. Staff recommends alternative one.
Very good. And Tim, is this, these are the improvements that are needed for the the traffic going out to sixteen, I'm assuming?
Yeah, so it, it actually, for I sixteen, since I sixteen has already been, the approaches to the exit on Old River have already been taken care of by GDOT when they did the interchange. We will start Um, we will start um from the uh end of those approaches to the Chatham County Line on one side uh and then from uh the on the other side from that approach uh to Highway eighty.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I I knew they made those improvements sometime back. We're just catching up with them. Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Any uh further discussion? Not asked for a motion.
Make a motion to approve, Floyd.
Second, Burdette.
Second, Deluge.
All in favor?
Uh.
Uh.
None opposed, motion carries. Item number fourteen, consideration to approve twenty-five dash ITB dash zero seven nine bid award and contract Waldor Construction LLC for the construction of storage building for Effingham County Sheriff's Office. Danielle?
Yes, sir. This award recommendation and contract is for the construction of a new storage building for the Effingham County Sheriff's Office. Waldor Construction LLC was the lowest bidder. The project includes um demolishing asphalt, um preparing the subgrade and constructing a one thousand twenty-five square foot um pre-engineered metal building with HVAC, electrical work and drainage installations. Staff recommends alternative one.
Very good. Any discussion? Not all asked for a motion?
So move, Helmy.
Second, Deluge.
All in favor?
Uh.
Uh.
None opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh, item number fifteen, uh consideration to appoint Jake Patrick to the planning board as representative for the second district. This was carried over from our uh prior uh previous meeting.
Mr. Chairman and commissioners, you all recall the discussion previously. Um, the discussion was if this member was allowed to participate on multiple boards. We did not find any information that um that says he's not able to do so. And Commissioner Burdette would like to move forward with this appointment. No staff recommends approval.
Very good. Uh, any further discussion?
Um, I'm gonna, I I do, um, Mr. Burdette and I have spoken, but um I still hold to my um I just, maybe there's no law against it, but to me, the IDA is a board that promotes business and the planning board, of course, is one that has to look carefully at what is brought into the county. So I I think there's just a conflict here in serving both boards. But um I respect Mr. Burdette's uh right to appoint whomever that he chooses, but um I'm still going to be against it for that reason. And I respect the democratic process as well, but um, just wanted to put that. I have nothing against Mr. Patrick. This has nothing to do with the individual and Ms. Johnson, please make sure that's clear in the minutes that uh has nothing to do with the person involved. It only has to do with the fact that it's too slim similar to me uh with the boards, so. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, I like that. And and I appreciate you bringing that up, Commissioner Helman. Um, and I did more due diligence than I did in the in the first place. I've talked to both boards and uh, of course, nothing legal against it, but also I couldn't find any reason to 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 deny him being on a board as well. I didn't see a conflict of interest learning more about the processes and everything else. And if there is one, just like we stepped down from a conflict of interest on our board, he would have to do the same thing at at the planning board if there was a conflict of interest or a conflict and and opinions from one board to the other. So and I after speaking with him, I trust he would be a a man of honor and he would he would step down in those situations. So uh with that, I'd like to to recommend that we uh approve alternative one.
We have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second, Deluge.
All in favor?
Uh.
Uh.
Those opposed?
Uh, Helmy.
With that, the motion carries with noted opposition from Commissioner Helman. Moving on to item number sixteen, consideration to approve resolution zero-two-five dash zero-zero-five to assure compliance with the Georgia Constitution by assessing and providing for collection of a direct annual tax to pay the principal and interest on general obligation bonds to be issued by the school district.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, just um I I discussed this with um the superintendent Ford. Uh, this is uh associated with uh the East Bloss and similar to our T-S blossom Splosh, there was uh the ability to um uh issue debt um in advance uh to be paid back with uh with those funds. Uh, and that's what this was related to uh by uh law, it does have to go through the county.
Very good. Thank you for that explanation, Tim. Uh, any discussion from anyone else? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Slow move. Helmy.
Deluge.
All in favor?
Uh.
Uh.
None opposed, the motion carries. All right, moving on to item number twelve, reports from commissioners and administrative staff. Uh, we'll start with staff.
Yeah, briefly, I just want to give you an update on where we are in the storm. Um, things did begin, um, the most recent updates we have do show um, a little bit more snow uh than our earlier reports. Um, so we're being we're we're preparing for that. Um, we do currently have two warming shelters, one in Guyton, one in Pynora open. Uh, if this results because of the increased uh precipitation uh in uh ice storm effects or down trees, um, uh, we've uh worked, we're working with the school district to potentially open some more. Uh, as of now that, I mean, right now, the county uh uh closed offices a little early today at three PM, as did courts. Uh, and we will be closed through tomorrow. Uh, we will take it um uh, we we will look at conditions tomorrow, um, and I will discuss with uh with the the chairman about whether that has to be carried on through Thursday. Um, but uh we are preparing as best we can, as everybody knows, the uh this particular area of the county is not uh very well prepared for snow as we only get it about every seven years. Um, so uh with what limited equipment we have, we're working with sanding all the county-owned bridges uh and some of the major roads, uh as well as getting what equipment we can use to plow, uh which is uh really limited to skid steers, motor graders uh and loaders uh to if they're necessary. Uh, we will, we will have those uh ready. There will be additional call um for the board if you want to attend it at ten AM tomorrow morning uh to see uh see where we are.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, for any public that may be on, could you direct them to where they uh will find information moving forward from both um, you know, the county and or emergency management?
Yeah, I think the quickest way we can disseminate information uh is on Facebook. Um, and if you went to the Effingham County Emergency Management Agency page, uh, that's the page that will have the most updates, uh the most frequent updates uh as to uh current status. We will be updating the county uh Facebook page as well. Uh, and if anyone has signed up for the Rave system, uh which is kind of like a reverse nine-one-one s- uh system, uh, they will be notified um uh as emergency alerts uh using that as well.
Okay, in our rave system, how do we direct people to sign up for it?
Uh, if you go on um the county page, you uh the county Facebook page under emergency management, there will be a um there'll be a link for it. Uh, but I what I will do is I will have the um the communications director uh repost uh the uh the link uh on our on all of our Facebook pages uh for folks to sign up.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you. Um, anything else from staff?
That's all we have.
Very good. Uh, anything from the commission?
Uh, my only concern again, and you've mentioned it on Facebook, are these uh ash roads. You know, the last storm we had caused us turmoil for quite a while. I don't know. There's really nothing we can do to prepare for that. I just, I know that's gonna probably cause us some some concerns in the next few weeks if this storm is bad as they're saying.
Yeah.
Correct.
Started having nightmares about this.
And and the issue is not so much the snow, but the sustained freezing temperatures um which causes any of the wa- uh vapor that's trapped in the ash um to freeze and and basically create surface damage on the roads. Um, so uh we're preparing as best we can. We're trying to let the public know that we anticipate this is going to happen. Uh, unfortunately, this happens in the winter, so therefore we have to go out and the best we can do is cold patch it uh until the spring. Uh, and uh we're prepared, uh we're prepared to do that uh once the uh once the moisture, snow and ice clear. Um, but um I'm hoping that um uh our roads, our ash roads are in a lot better shape now than they were in twenty eighteen.
Yeah.
Uh, so I'm hoping they withstand withstand a little bit more um uh of the uh of the freezing temperatures. Uh, but as I said, we anticipate there's gonna be damage.
Good. Uh, Tim, what is the best uh way for constituents to reach out? Do they have uh damages or or, you know, issues um, you know, uh due to the storm?
Yeah, and so what we're gonna do is we're gonna, we're gonna put that information out there so folks can know uh where to call um with their with their complaints on it. Um, and uh one of the things um we will also have open for uh the foreseeable future, probably the next week or two, uh is the citizen support line uh which is a non-emergency line which goes into our MAC um our uh call our nine-one-one call center. Um, you know, where they can uh where they can, you know, report any sort of danger in the road, uh dangerous potholes, that sort of thing. Um, so we will make sure we will get the response um uh numbers uh on how to communicate. They can do it via email, uh but we will get all that out to folks um uh probably tomorrow.
Great. Thank you, thank you. Uh, anything else from the commission?
No, I would say you guys probably need to get out of there pretty quickly, just in case, but if you get stuck, you should have plenty of pillows because Mike Lindell is on staff today, so.
Yes, very good. And yeah, um, yeah, thank you, Tim and staff and Clint and you know, all the EMA group, uh, you know, as always, um, very prepared and um you know, I'm I'm, I thank you guys for getting this information out, you know. That seems to be the biggest bottleneck is, you know, who to call when things go, so. Um, I was like, we've got that under control. And um we will cross our fingers, toes and say our prayers that everything turns out the way we hope it's just pretty and that's it.
That's right.
Very good.
Uh. Uh, are we going to look at, discuss five-eighty-one at all? Are you gonna do that separately when we can talk face to face?
No, I I I would be happy to bring that up, um, because I I I did some research on it. Um, and I think a lot of this, we we do have to get this information out to the public as well. Um, and the, in two thousand eight, um, the county instituted its own floating uh rate exemption uh which is um, for lack of a better word, a little bit more generous uh than what House Bill five-eighty-one uh offers. Uh, so by allowing five-eighty-one to um uh uh to take effect and not opting out, uh it really, uh from what I see, and I'm waiting for confirmation from the uh tax assessor on this, uh, there is no uh, uh, there will be no negative effects uh to the county. Effectively, um, everybody's base year is already established uh because, you know, o- over the last seventeen years, uh whenever they uh applied for their homestead, it would be based on the previous year's um uh assessed value. Um, and so that would continue on. Uh, Carter Burns and five-eighty-one are similar in that uh they limit the increase in your assessed values uh to inflation. Uh, but Carter Burns goes a step further and states that if inflation is more than three percent for a year, um, then uh then that assessed ratio can only go up by three percent maximum. Uh, so it's a little bit more generous in that regard. Um, and that being the case, we're one of only about twenty counties in the state out of the hundred fifty-nine uh that actually have enacted local legislation for this. Uh, and so uh we're one of the ones that probably uh, you know, in my estimation, probably don't have to do anything on it, um, since the tax break is already on the books. One interesting little factoid uh that I put on the email and I'm gonna get out to, I'm gonna do a much better job of getting this information out to the public that last year, this resulted in almost a billion dollars um in uh uh va- uh property value uh being exempted um from the tax rolls that would have been on it had the uh exemption not been in place. Um, so uh we are a much more tax advantaged uh county uh for property owners, uh certainly homestead owners uh than other locations.
Thank you, Tim. And and in commission, um, my email earlier and my discussions with Tim, um you know, prior to the email and post the email was to make sure that that five-eighty-one did not supersede anything current legislation we had in place. If we had a pick, basically, if we had to pick one or the other. Um, and if we had to pick one or the other to make sure that we didn't have to reject you know, the five-eighty-one, should we keep the more advantageous Carter Burns? And that's all I have.
Yeah, and so what it does is whichever one, five-eighty-one or Carter Burns is more advantageous to the property owner, uh, that's the one that will uh um uh that will be in effect. And in this case, in nearly every case, it should be Carter Burns.
Very good. Thank you, Tim.
Well, that's the main thing. I just want to make sure because, you know, we're we're gonna be giving up something if we don't opt out in terms of local control. And I definitely understand that the taxpayers will look at it as a way for us to grab more money, so um just, but I just want to make sure. I just, every time you give up some control, I just want to make sure, we want to make sure we want to give that up, so.
Yeah.
I appreciate y'all looking into it and let's just make sure would be my concern.
Yeah, Tim said he's gonna confirm with the tax commissioner, and uh we are also going to do a better job of of doing a compare and contrast between the two because I suspect once this goes on the agenda, we're gonna have a little bit of a, you know, question as to what's better. And uh I know we'll be prepared to answer those questions as to why one is more advantageous than the other. And that we're, you know, basically, we're looking out for the best interest of citizens and not for the coffers, so. Very good.
I'd 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 like to say this is just a positive if we're done with that. Um, I like uh the uh solar stop flashing signs that's popping up around. Um, I I guess this was approved maybe before I got home, but I'm appreciative of them. Um, seen a couple around the county. One, of course, is at Log Landon, which is a bad road for us. Um, love to see one that's still well. People are always running through that one, but um whoever came up with those, they're good, so. Kudos to whoever that is.
Agreed.
Yeah, we'll look at, we'll look at uh, uh, I I think you're talking Long Bridge and Still Oak Isle?
Yeah.
Okay.
People run through that one all the time, Tim.
Yes, they do.
Mr. Helmy, this is Commissioner Deluge. Yes, I I noticed that one um at Log Landing in Stillwell yesterday, and I was really glad to see that because, yeah, that's a bad intersection.
Yeah, and you had a personal experience with that one with your mom, so.
Yes, my mom actually got in a um terrible, but definitely a, it could have been really bad, but yeah, she definitely got in a a wreck there. I was pretty scared.
Very good. Um, Tim, um, and and not to keep things going further, do we have any updates on our safe streets um for all peace?
Yeah, we we should have a um draft report. Um, and I should actually have it uh by the next meeting. Um, oh, are you talking about the grant?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so the grant we ended up getting uh, uh, denied on. Uh, they said it was close, but it was oversubscribed. Um, we did have a follow-up phone call with them to find out what we could do better on the next uh, round of grants.
Hmm.
And um, so when that window opens up, we'll be just modifying um, uh, modifying our, our submission based on that feedback that we got.
Very good. Okay, well, great. Good to hear. We'll get it right. We'll get it right next time.
That's right.
All right, we have anything further from anyone? If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
No move. Help me.
Second, Burdette.
There you go.
Very good. Thanks for uh, again, for joining last, last minute and over the phone. It's not the most ideal conditions, but we wanna get this business done so we didn't pile up the next meeting as well and keep the uh, all the pointy thing, you know, for, for public consumption. Y'all have a good day. Stay warm.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.